Okay, good morning, ladies and gentlemen and council. I'd like to call this meeting to order and I'm going to ask Counselor Crick to start us off with a short prayer, please.
Lord, I thank you for this opportunity we have to live in the MD of Bonneville in such a great place. Thank you for all the great people that live in the MD. Pray your protection over the staff as they're out working today in many different areas and on the roads. Also pray your blessings on everyone that lives in the MD and pray for council today that you give us wisdom as we make decisions and wisdom going forward into the future too as we make more decisions. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Counselor Crick. We have agenda, I'm just wondering if there's any additions to the agenda, seeing none, I need a motion, gentlemen. Yes, Counselor Skarson, thank you for making a motion that council approves adopting agenda as presented. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Looking for the adoption of the minutes regular meeting of March 14. Yes, thank you, Councilor Swiger for making a motion. On behalf of council to adopt a regular, sorry, that's all right, that's my fault, I shouldn't have started this soon. Counselor Swiger, that council approves adoption of the minutes of March 14, 2023, regular meeting of council as presented. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. We're going to go to number seven, 7.1, Development Application Number 2023-D-021.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is Development Application 2023-D-021 for Larry and Cecile, Larry Skarson and Cecile Chartrand. The applicant is applying for a dog kennel use located in an existing farm buildings. The property is located on Highway 41, 1.5 miles south of the hamlet of La Corie. Adjacent properties are a vacant subdivision, quarter sections, and remnants. The application is being brought forward as administration received a complaint regarding barking dogs and the number of livestock on the land. An investigation occurred and contact was made with the landowner which resulted in the landowner applying for the uses. The lands were rezoned in order to create a country residential subdivision as this was the requirement at that time. This lot is located within an agricultural district and use area. The applicant is applying for development permit for their existing dog breeder kennel. The owners purchased the property in the fall of 2019 and relocated their dogs to the acreage. They were not aware that there were permit requirements for this type of use. They have 20 females and 10 males which are used for breeding purposes. They are small dog breeds such as Yorkies, Pomeranians, and Shih Tzu's. They upgraded the existing farm structures to accommodate the dogs such as adding 16 roofed dog runs, exercise pens, and air conditioning in the maternity building. Both buildings are heated and have hot and cold running water. They clean the pens at least once a day and dispose of the waste in a compost pile. They have one part-time employee, half the customers come to site by appointment and half have the dogs delivered to the purchaser. They sell dogs in the Bonneville, Edmonton, Slave Lake areas and into Saskatchewan. They also have four yard dogs for pest control, livestock guardianship, and security. The land use bylaw section 50, kennels, requires kennel buildings or exterior exercise areas to be 1,000 feet from any dwelling located on adjacent lots. The maternity ward is about 700 feet from the nearest residence which is across Highway 41. This 1,000-foot radius also includes the entire vacant subdivision. A review of the Highway 28 and highway area structure plan was conducted and there are no specific policies for this area. A referral was sent to the MD's Environmental and Protective Services Department with no concerns received. Adjacent landowner letters were sent out on February 21, 2023, and we received a letter of concern. The concerns are barking, farm noises, dogs running at large, and noncompliance with the MD land use bylaw. Recommendation for development number 2023-D-021 is refuse the request for a dog breeder kennel as the use is, oh, I'm sorry, as the use is not neither a permitted or discretionary use within the country residential CR2 district. Additionally, it does not conform with section 50 of the land use bylaw. We do have the applicants here, if you have any questions, if you would like to speak to them, a motion would be needed to be made. Any questions?
Yes, Deputy Reed.
I just have a question for yourself for clarification. So, in your report, thing I'm looking at, oh, here I go, I lost myself. So, under Appendix B, in your, in your letter, it said that in 2021, we had a visit from the animal control to perform an unscheduled inspection. The officers were very impressed and had no follow-up action necessary. So, was that animal control, was that ours? Was that our department that did that?
So, this letter was from the applicant and he said it was the SPCA.
It was the SPCA?
Yeah.
Okay. Based on, like, on our direction or?
No.
You know, just a, okay, thank you. One more, so in regards to, sorry, in regards to the mapping there, I don't see any neighboring homes. I see the one, I know there's one probably across the, across the highway, but where else are the homes situated?
Through the reef to Deputy Reed Fadiev. Yes, there is a skid shack across the Highway 41 which is about 700 feet from the maternity ward that is the nearest residence. There is a small subdivision that is just north of the parcel, but it is vacant.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
On the corner of one, there's also a house, right on the, on the, little bit up where that, yeah. So, on the corner southwest of, southeast of one, there's one in the house, and then on about seven, there's another dwelling there. Yeah, right there. And then on about seven, right about there, there's a, there's a little bit further down, there's another, that's the only residence that I know.
It's about a quarter mile or half a mile away.
The one up, up top, yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Reed?
Yes, go ahead, sorry.
Can you just clarify the?
Sorry.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to ask, so on, on the conditions, it says here, no dog, including pups, shall be outdoors between 10:00 PM and 7:00 PM. They said they've got four dogs in the yard, so does that include those four dogs as well?
Through the reef to Counselor Skarson. That would be for the dogs that are part of the breeding program. They would still be allowed to have their livestock guardian dogs out at that time.
You're good with that? Yeah, Counselor Swiger?
Yeah, I was just trying to understand the, this is, this is complaint-driven, so the people who complained live where? You said something about a skid shack.
Yeah, right across from, if you go just right across, a little bit up and right across, almost you see that oil lease, oil lease road just north of this property. So, right across from there, there was an old, kind of a yard that was, I think, a house was moved in there and then someone moved the skid shack, and I'm not 100% sure that someone's living in that skid shack right now. Maybe they are, maybe they aren't. Once in a while, you see people there, sometimes you don't.
So, just to, I'm not sure if I followed that. So, that's north or is that east across the, or west?
Just a little, just a little north and west.
Across the highway.
Right across the highway, yeah.
Okay.
But then kitty-corner to that, there was a Mr. Dan Brimo, that'd be his son up there, and he'd be down lower kitty-corner, kind of, he's on the bottom half of one and these guys are on the top half of six. Thank you, I believe, yeah. Any other questions or comments? Yes, go ahead, Mr. Skarson.
So, I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve with the listed conditions. I have no problem with any of them, I think they're fair, and I've been out there and I think that they run a good operation, so.
Okay.
Need to see him shut down.
Okay, thank you, Counselor.
And Mr. Reed, I'll just make a comment. It looks pretty rural out there, so I'm just kind of surprised that you'd have anybody sort of in the rural complaining about a dog. I live in Ardmore, I got the neighbors with dogs, I'm not, you know, the dogs are barking, it's kind of like if there's dogs barking, I think there's probably a problem at night, so it's kind of a guard thing, you don't mind that? Anyway, I don't see an issue there, thanks.
Yes, Deputy Reed Fadiev?
So, where, so in regards to the property in question, where is the subdivision located? How far away is the vacant subdivision?
The vacant subdivision is just north of the property in, that we are discussing. It shares the north boundary.
So, it's right across the road, then?
The subdivision, the vacant subdivision?
Yeah.
It is along Highway 41, but it shares the north, north boundary, there, that's the south boundary of the subdivision.
So, how far away from, from the property is it?
Right, right next door, I think.
Right next door, but it is a vacant subdivision and they own the rest of the quarter section.
So, we're looking at 100 to 200 feet, not 1,000? Okay.
Yeah, it's probably a subdivision that was taken out years ago and it never was, just sitting there, right?
Mr. Reed?
Yeah, go ahead.
Through the reef to, is, was that subdivision sent adjacent landowner letter as well and they received no concerns from them?
Through the reef to Counselor Crick, yes, that subdivision was also sent the adjacent landowner letters with no concerns received from them.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Skarson, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council approves development permit application number 2023-D-021, a dog breeder kennel within southwest of 663-5 west of the 4th M pursuant to Part III, Section 18 of the land use bylaw for Larry Skarson as per the alternative presented. Any discussion on this motion? Yes, go ahead.
The acreage is eight and a half acres, correct?
That is correct.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Okay, on to 7.2.
This is Development Application 2023-D-022 for Larry Skarson and Cecile Chartrand. The applicant is applying for an exemption to the land use bylaw number 1667, section 59, keeping of animals, limit of two livestock on a parcel less than 10 acres. The property is located on Highway 41, 1.5 miles south of the hamlet of La Corie. Adjacent properties are vacant subdivision, quarter sections, and remnants. The application is being brought forward as administration has received a complaint regarding barking dogs and the number of livestock on the land. An investigation occurred and contact was made with the landowner which resulted in the landowner applying for this application, for this exemption. The lands were rezoned in order to create a country residential subdivision as this was the requirement at that time. This lot is located within an agricultural district and use area. The applicant is applying for a development permit to keep up to 12 livestock. The applicant started, stated that there was a herd of 160 goat and sheep this summer but has since brought it down to 30 head. The following illustrates the proposed future number of livestock for the land, which would be three goats and sheep, two cows, four horses for a wagon team, and two donkeys, which brings it up to a total of 11. The applicant was unaware that there was a limit to the number of livestock allowed on smaller lots. They fenced and cross-fenced the land by local hay and green feed and compost the waste. They plan to pasture most of the cows and horses at other lands during the summer. A review of the Highway 28 and highway area structure plan showed there were no policies for this area. A referral was sent to the MD's Environmental and Protective Services Department with concerns about breakdown of the soil, increased weeds, and about parasites in the animals. Adjacent landowner letters were sent out on February 21 and we received no response. Recommendation for development application number 2023-D-022 is refuse the request for an exemption to the land use bylaw number 1667, section 47, keeping of animals as it does not conform to the limit of two. Any questions?
Counsel, any questions? Yes, Counselor Skarson.
I don't have any questions, I was just a little surprised that it was only two, like, two cows for anything under 10 acres, is that what you're saying then?
Through the reef to Counselor Skarson, that is correct, two livestock animals on parcels less than 10 acres.
There goes my plan, so. No, I was, I mean, I would have been probably not complying too if I would have grabbed a couple cows, but anyways, it's, it's good learning, but if no one else will, I'm going to make a motion to approve with the following conditions, I think those are fair, so, again, 12, I think that you have plenty of room for that, right, so.
Okay, we'll wait till it comes up and then I'll, thank you.
I just ask, I guess, maybe, how often do you see someone apply for more than two animal exemption?
Through the reef to Counselor Skarson. Since I've been here since 2014, we only actually had one other application, and it was granted but not to the extent that they wished.
So, I guess my next question would be, how many people do you think own less than 10 acres and have more than two animals?
Enforcement is done on a complaint basis, so unfortunately, I do not have any numbers that would reflect that.
I just, I think someone's going to be coming in here, if we pass this, someone's going to be coming here with, like, we pass this one, so someone's going to come in with 10 horses and say, well, you passed this one, so pass this one, so, that's just something you got to be aware of.
Well, where did you get the 12 from then? Like, where did that number come from?
Through the reef to Counselor Skarson. The applicant requested 11, one additional would be good for a little bit of a flex just for counselor, council's consideration. This is something that we would look at when we do review the land use bylaw.
All right.
So, you said someone else came in and applied, so what did they get exempt to?
I believe they got up to four.
There's definitely lots of places throughout the MD that have more than two livestock on, under 10 acres, but, you know, if someone complains, then it comes to here, right?
Yeah, well, it's just unfortunate that the people that get complained about are the ones that have to comply and the ones who don't, don't have to comply, right?
Yeah. Mr. Reed? Yes?
For councils, just some clarification for councils, the land use bylaw is pretty clear, and that's why administrations had to make the recommendations administrative make. The issue with minimum number of, or maximum number of livestock on small parcels is not really to do with the livestock themselves, it's to do with manure management. That's always the issue on a small parcel, it's one thing to clean up after small animals, dogs, cats, et cetera, it's another thing to clean up after 12 cows. And that's always the driving factor in terms of when land use bylaws are created, where those maximum numbers per, per acre come from, it really has to do with manure management. So, just, it's just not a random number that's pulled out of, that's pulled out of somebody's hat, it's driven by how in a, in a small acreage, how is somebody going to manage the, the manure from 12, 12 heads of livestock.
Well, it's a big deal, the bigger the livestock, the bigger the file, you bet.
Yeah, Mr. Reed, I'll just, I'll comment also, I'm not against this, I know we have bylaws, but it's not as if they're asking for 12 cows or, or 12 horses or whatever on, on less than 10 acres, so, you know, they've, it looks like they're going to, you know, they're trying really hard to get that number down, so from 30 goats and sheep down to three and then two cows, four horses and two donkeys, so, it's kind of, you know, you got this kind of mix of animals, I don't think it's a big deal, there's enough room for it, and as long as we're not getting a lot of complaints about it, I don't think it's a big issue, but.
Well, there was no complaints about the numbers, I believe that's correct, right? There was no complaints that came into this?
No letters were received when the adjacent landowner's letters went out.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Counselor Skarson?
I just think also that, you know, the way things are going these days, like, we're, maybe this is something we need to revisit because I think more and more people with 10 or less acres will be looking for livestock, right? I mean, I've got seven acres and it's something that I've been considering for the last year or so, right, considering where food prices are and everything else, so, maybe something we need to look at and readjust, right, so.
Okay, thank you. Did I read this? Okay, go ahead.
So, if this is a past, would we be able to get, will we have inspections of the property yearly, make sure they're conforming to keeping it clean and all that stuff? It seems like law number was for eight and a half acres.
Through the reef to Counselor Slupchuk, if there was a condition placed as part of the permit approval, that there would be an annual inspection by MD of Bonneville enforcement staff, that certainly could be, I think unfortunately, the problem with that would be, that's not a condition on any other ones.
Yes.
So, would that be a permanent condition we would do from here on in, as anytime somebody came for a permit, we would ask for an enforcement inspection on an annual basis? That obviously has other budget implications in terms of people power in the department, et cetera, et cetera. We are complaint-driven, that is typically how we, how we operate enforcement, so are there other people that have greater numbers on smaller parcels?
Yes.
Entirely likely, but if the neighbors aren't complaining, we just don't have the, again, we don't have the, the staff resources to go counting heads on, on small parcels and determine whether or not they're inside or outside the bylaw at that time. Council would like to make that condition, but certainly it's something we could manage, it just would create a precedent for what we do into the future as well.
Thank you, yes, Deputy Reed Fadiev?
So, so the motion says that it's an exemption for this parcel of land, so that means that once this parcel land is exempt, is exempt also on a future basis as well as far as when it sells? Would that exemption follow the, you know, like, the sale of the property?
Through the reef to Deputy Reed Fadiev, we could actually have it as a condition that it is only for Larry Skarson and Cecile Chartrand.
Okay. Can I make a friendly amendment to, to that one there?
Yeah, sure, I guess.
Mr. Reed? Yeah? I think I just lost it here, but the.
That's okay, we'll go back here and then, when you find it.
Do you want to just reword your thing or do you want amendment to the?
You got it or not?
I don't really know where that is in there.
One second.
Yeah, so I was just going to say.
We might have a problem, go ahead.
I just received information, we can't do it specifically for the person, but we could put a time limit on it that the applicants would have to reapply, so if we put it valid for a year, then the applicants would have to reapply, but that would prevent the development permit from running with the land forever.
So, Mr. Reed, my, my question was, it's still complaint-driven, so if you gave them the permit to do this, and we, and then a year later, you know, a huge subdivision builds up and we've got a bunch of people complaining, it's still complaint-driven, is it not? So, then that time it would come back and, and we could refuse it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think.
Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Reed, I think we just leave the, the motion the way it is, that's the best way to go forward, thank you.
It's probably the most, less complicated that way. You guys still okay with that, to leave it the way it is? Yeah, okay, all right, we have a motion by Counselor Skarson on behalf of council, the council approves development permit application number 2023, and she's gone. That's all right. Exemption to section 49.5 within southwest of 663-5 west, I think she's doing it on purpose. I gotta pull out my own screener.
She thought you had it memorized.
Yeah, I thought I did too. Within southwest of 663-5 west of the 4th pursuant to Part III, Section 18 of the land use bylaw for Larry Skarson as per the alternate presented. Any discussion, any other discussion on this motion? Yes, Counselor Slupchuk?
Yeah, so this small acreage, I think it, this is a good way to go forward, because a lot of people can't afford a bunch of land, and it helps promote the hobby farmers, and if they keep control of it, and I'm sure they will, they already made a bunch of changes, so, I'd like to see this go forward and they be successful in their operation.
Thank you, any, any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to call for the vote. Okay, that's carried, thank you.
Thank you.
I think we're going to take, yeah, thanks, great job. We're gonna, we're gonna take a five-minute break and then I think we have delegation at 9:30 here, correct?
Can I just say one thing?
Sure.
These are both my applications, and I would just like to thank you all, regardless of way, or which way the, the vote would have went, I would have still stood and thanked you for showing up and putting your name on a ballot. It's a thankless job in a lot of cases, and somebody, it's a dirty job, but somebody has to do it. You're going to make somebody happy today and you're going to make somebody sad today, and we know that, and a lot of times, it's very poorly paid, and I thank you.
Yeah, thank you, sir, have a great day. Okay, thank you, welcome back. We have a delegation from Hartz for Healthcare here this morning, come up ladies, welcome.
Thank you, Reed, for having us, I'm Jennifer Corey Lee from Hartz for Healthcare. Oh, sorry. Thank you, Reed, for having us, I'm Jennifer Corey Lee from Hartz for Healthcare. This year, we are having our annual gala on May 6. It is our biggest fundraising event, and at Hartz for Healthcare, we strive to improve the healthcare in Cold Lake and the surrounding area with the unwavering help from our community, including the MD. Our aim is to ensure that everyone has access to proper care from preventative medicine to emergency services, and our main initiatives include the purchase of medical equipment, fostering facility upgrades, supporting our healthcare professionals and public through awareness and advocacy, and medical professional recruitment and retention. The Hartz for Healthcare Gala, as I said, is our primary fundraiser, and this year is being held on May 6 at the Cold Lake Energy Center. Recruitment and retention of medical professionals to our area remains at the forefront of our efforts and our primary concern for our community members and stakeholders. We've worked diligently to develop a program that builds and nurtures these efforts in response to the immense needs, need to bring physicians into our community. We've built a strong community partnership with key stakeholders like yourselves and feel that our recruitment and retention program will continue to have great success in ensuring that everyone in our community can access a family physician, reduce emergency wait times, and relieve the pressure on our current healthcare team. And our request to you today is to maintain this collaborative community partnership that continues to have a direct impact on creating a safe and healthy environment where your employees work, live, and play, and we're asking for a commitment of the following. Superior-level sponsorship to the amount of $10,000, which would include the purchase of equipment for an acute care P500 therapy service, plus two tables at the event. And with the purchase of the two tables, we hope we can count on your attendance at the event to sort of be involved in the festivities and the celebration that we have that night. We want to thank you for your previous, sorry. Oh, and sorry, Carrie forgot to remind me, or she did remind me and I forgot to ask if you guys, because you have in the past helped our silent auction be so successful, if you would be willing to provide some sort of donation to the silent auction event, which is being upgraded this year to be online. So we're hoping to have even more success and fun with that. We want to thank you for your past donation of the grant that has supported our recruitment and retention program. And we continue to use and have used towards some physicians who have moved into the local area. And we hope that you'll just continue to encourage our efforts with your financial support and your attendance in our events. Is there any questions for us? I can go more into the equipment and what it's used for and chat about what services we serve in the area if you have any questions around that.
Hey, thanks, guys, girls. So regards to the, to the equipment, I know we've been really struggling with getting the proper equipment for the services that we need for our areas. Why has the government kind of fallen back to, to make it your guys' burden and the burden for the community and not stepped up to it? It's been an ongoing process. Is that beginning better?
I think that it is definitely a challenge. And this year, actually, we have pushed back towards AHS to ask this question because we had some, we had some requests for significantly high levels of funding for hospital surgical beds and other equipment for the visiting specialists that totaled over like $100,000, which we felt was completely inappropriate, actually, for us to fundraise for. All of the equipment that we ask for sort of supplements what is already in place and just enhances the experience for our community members. So this bed, for example, we do have the beds within the facility, however, they're rented and end up impacting the, the working budget of the hospital. And this would free that up and make it so that we have the equipment in hospital immediately if we should have somebody that needs it. And then it wouldn't be pooled from an AHS supply. This would fit for our, our community members in this hospital and it wouldn't be something that could be removed. And it's a really actually important piece of equipment. I used to work in the hospital and we have lots of people who end up waiting for long-term care and that sort of thing and hospital beds. If any of you have been admitted, you know that they're not super comfortable. And if you're there long-term with mobility issues, that skin breakdown and that sort of thing is a difficult thing to combat and deal with. And so it just gives more comfort to the members who, or the patients that are in the hospital for longer periods. But we do completely acknowledge that AHS has more responsibility than sometimes they provide. And we have worked towards some advocacy with that. And we're continuing to push back when there are requests that seem inappropriate. But this is a, a piece of equipment that's already available, but would make it even better for our community members.
Right, yeah. I mean, it's always a challenge, right? You know, we're, you know, like, do we stay in our lane or not, right?
Yes.
And it's tough. Now we see the, you know, city of Cold Lake, they're, have a body now for doctors. And I mean, we're at, you know, what point does, do we hold the MLAs and the MPs accountable for all that, right?
I, I do absolutely agree with you. I think that's a really important conversation to continue having. I'm, I'm a nurse practitioner within, in the system. I work for the military, but I, my clients utilize the MD, or sorry, the Alberta Health Services, Services. And that's definitely a pushback that needs to happen. And I, I hope that you guys continue to do the work that way. And I know you have in the past. And as a charity group, well, we try not to be significantly political because that can get us into hot water. We do advocate for our healthcare system by asking those questions and pushing it back to AHS to address some of the needs. They set up these programs. And while we want to enhance them and make them better for our community and for the healthcare professionals that are, are working here, because when we have the right equipment and/or enhanced equipment, then it makes it easier to practice. Our other ask is actually some endoscopy equipment, which will decrease the wait time and make it so that people can stay within the community and have their services performed here, which as a primary care provider, when I'm referring patients, it makes it a lot easier to manage my patients if they're here. And that's like just with this equipment for the bed service. If I have a patient who has skin breakdown and we, we can't get the right equipment here, we can, we can send them to a facility that does have the right equipment, but that might be outside of the community and especially with older adults who are the primary users of this equipment. That's very challenging because I often have family members who are, are providing comfort, companionship, and sometimes care within the facility. And we want them to, to be here and be with us.
Yeah, that room that you guys did last time around over at the Cold Lake Hospital was phenomenal, right? That was, that was a great, that was a great room. So I'll always support you guys in, you know, in a business manner and everything else. So thanks for watching.
No, we really appreciate that. And I think that's a very pertinent question, so.
Yes, Counselor.
I'll just say, yeah, we all look forward to the gala. It's always a great thing. And my wife loves to dress up for it and, you know, get out once in a while, right?
Yeah, no, no. Hope to see you all there. It's a-
We do have two tables reserved for you guys, so hopefully.
Hopefully, we can see you all there.
Yeah, we, we do need a motion. If there's no other questions, you'll make that motion. Thank you, Counselor Swiger, for making the motion on behalf of council. The council accepts the presentation by Hartz for Healthcare as information. Furthermore directs administration to bring their request for funding, support of their 2023 fundraising gala to future meeting of council for consideration. Any discussion on this? Yes, go ahead.
I just want to say thank you for all you guys do for the community. And I think all your hard work is a testament to the sell-out of the gala every year. Last year was my first time attending. It was amazing. And I'll be sure I don't ever miss another one. But thank you guys for all you do. And I look forward to seeing yous again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ladies. Have a great day. I'll call for the vote. That's Carrie. I'm pretty sure I heard Mr. Shertrand. Somewhere. What? Yeah?
You know, wait, maybe I had one question for these girls there. The silent auction, when does that, is that just the night of kind of thing? Or is that leading up to the event?
Yes. No, we will have it just like a-
Okay.
Prior?
Yeah, I just, I'm just curious as to when this comes back, if you have enough time to advertise, you know, the pass for the ski hill or whatever we end up, right? So you kind of want it in a, by what date, let's say?
I say April 15th.
Okay.
April 14th is the shot, I don't know where the bottom side option is.
Okay.
It'll be a night with Darcy Skarson.
Well, good morning, everybody. It's the first time I meet two guys, my employees. You know, I pay all the wages.
Thanks, Bernie.
And we all sit down before a folder. Anyway, this is a special thing. I look at you all in your eyes. Good morning, Barry. Well, I'm here for one purpose. To look at you in the eyes, in your eyes. I think you've seen my letter?
Yes, we did.
You read it?
Yes, we did.
Okay. I'm here to help you to, sorry. I'm too old to do that kind of stuff. Let me take my breath. I'm helping you, here to help you decide on your future. Because mine is just about done. But everything's in that letter. It's a blueprint for you to follow and, and make the right decisions. Because if you don't make the right decisions, this will affect you personally and all your families. And if you do the right decision, it'll maybe be the best thing you ever did in your life. Because it'll affect thousands and thousands of people, older people and people in need. So... I'm a one-piston guy. So I, I've been paralyzed for 40 years. And I'm living on one, only one piston because my one lung doesn't work. And I did all, you've seen, but there's 14 items in there. And, and lots of stuff we did. There's a lot of you I don't even know personally. But your dad is still alive.
Yes, he is.
And your mom.
Yes, she is.
And yours too, probably. The only person I didn't speak with was out here on the phone. And we all agreed, we were on the same page. And you only gave me 15 minutes to talk about it. I could talk all day. Anyway, you're here for one purpose, and it's to help people. Nobody likes to see. People like myself, disabled and in pain, you don't want to see that. And there's a lot of people in pain right now and having difficulties. I don't think you'd be on, we were all on the same page when I phoned you guys. And that is, we don't want to see anybody suffer. And I don't think you want to see anybody suffer either. Because if your family's sick or something, or your daughter, mom, I don't think, I know some people, Barry knew your dad for sure. Because he was one of the main helpers, one of the, to do all these things, those 14 things that we did here. And, well, in 15 minutes, you can't talk about. There's two specials, three special items in there that are special. This is the one on where we come from. And we wouldn't be here if it wouldn't be for our parents or grandparents. And the other one is the milk program. Because, you know, milk is something special. Because all of you and all of us had their first milk from your mom's breast. And you wouldn't be alive if it wouldn't be for that milk. And I, this milk program affected thou, I don't even know how many thou, excuse me.
It's okay.
I'm a Frenchman.
That's all right.
Anyway, it affected thousands and thousands of families and students to get their quarters back, milk quarters back. And we did get it back. We got $1,000 for each cow we had here in Alberta. And I don't know how many kids profited from that milk program. I don't even, they don't even know they did that. And we got, like I said, a thousand bucks. That's millions of dollars in quarters for model. And the other one is, let's see there, why you guys are benefiting right now is the money from the oil patch. They pissed me off when they came here. I thought like, because they ruined my roof. They couldn't even pass on my roof. I said, that's bullshit. So I went-
Just watch your language.
Okay. You're talking to a farmer anyway, whatever.
It's okay.
Okay. So I went to see the council. And Leo Romeo Lozano was here, your dad was here. And I talked to Renee Asley. And we got, we formed a leaps association. And this is what got the money you're getting right now, millions of bucks, because we did that. And you're still getting it. It won't last forever. And the other one is, look at your phones. The toll-free system. You're always, I'm saving you guys a thousand bucks a year over long-distance call. I don't know if you guys remember that. You had to pay long-distance from Ardmore East to Cold Lake and from Ancho or whatever, not, anyway, it's from-
Ozla? No?
No, just down the road there, five, six miles, eight miles on the Glendon Road. And we're French here. Anyway, from French here to Malague.
Yep.
You had to pay a long-distance call.
Yes.
Me and Renee Asley went to see the minister. And we got, I got people to work. I had, I had people work from Malague to Cherry Road, to the border.
Yep.
And I still have that petition. I have 3,500 names on that petition. That's why you got toll-free system. And that was for the whole MD, not only a portion of it. So anyway, I don't know how many dollars you're saving, but you're saving a hell of a lot. And the other item is the, well, there's so many. These are the main five, the main three items that I want you to recognize. And if you make the right decisions, I'm helping you make your future. Because that's all I, that's, I was born to do. I've done this. Helping people all my life. You, you only have 60 years here on the paper. There's 20 years in Malague and St. Vincent. That is not even written in there. If you need the rest of the story, I'm willing to give it to you. Then willing also to give you good points on how to save money and have a health in your life. Because I did all that. And it works. I guarantee it works. So anyway, if you want, if you have any questions, just ask me.
Okay.
You have questions right now?
Does anybody have?
Maybe that you want to know about the people I helped from Ottawa? Dr. Lecce was born right beside me in Malague in St. Terry. And he, he helped me lots for different things. And the boy Eugene Whalen, same thing. Don Mazinkowski, the, the Horner's, Doug and Hugh Horner, helped me do all kinds of stuff. Great Nazi. And if you do the right thing, I've got people right now working on matching everything you're going to put in to help the FCS. They're working on that right now.
Okay.
And you'll be known across Alberta if you do the right thing. And this, the blueprints are right there. Now, if you follow that, you will be the happiest people right here. If you don't, you'll be miserable all your life. And you won't have any examples for your kids. What you want to do, if you want to show example to, to your, your kids and the people you're working for. And this affects a hell of a lot of people. And the only reason I'm here is because of you. I want to thank you all for the work you do. And you made one mistake. And that's why I'm here. And this is for the, the, what you did on the mileage and the, the knife you used, man, that knife was sharp. Because you used it to cut 60% of the benefits of the seniors what they need now. For you, the mileage was 50 cents a mile of a kilometer. You went down to 20. And also in that, you excluded all the people from Highway 28 South. You excluded them. How in the heck can you do that? I mean, something is wrong with. But when you do something for the MD, you do it for all the MD. But when you do something for the MD, you do it for all the MD. And that has to be corrected. It's all in there, it's all in the...
Yeah, we see it here, sir.
And I give you time to decide until the June. Because after June, if you do the right thing, Alberta will know that Bonneville is... I gotta get oxygen.
I'll see if anyone wants to ask a question right now.
I'll just say, Mr. Reeve, that once I chatted with you, got the letter, I, you know, I did some checking into things. I was at our RMA session, and FCM did a presentation. And then the local rep, Caleb Blanchard, did reach out to me and had more discussions. I didn't realize that the MD was, I guess, one of the only or few municipalities that actually has that program. The town doesn't offer that program. And so, you know, there'll probably maybe be some thought put into that program again, I would imagine. And I've asked that maybe our new director from, from...
FCS.
FCS actually comes and presents to council and kind of fills us in on some of those details. And maybe we can have kind of further discussions about how we want to fund it going forward.
Well, David Beal came here and gave you, he was, he's a professional. And he's been doing, helping people for forty years in Bonneville here. He knows what he's talking about. And his recommendations were refused. I don't know why, but they were. And you know how these people feel at FCS? I was there a few weeks ago. And they could not help people that I knew. They haven't got the funds. They need funds. And if you, if you would do, I'm asking you only for fifty thousand bucks. That's peanuts. You're getting millions from the oil patch. And people should come first. And I admire you for wanting to help the immigrants, the Ukrainian people. That's terrific. I mean, they need help. But first, our people come first, right near, right in Bonneville. And there's, I don't know, there's two hundred of us here, they're dying. And there's two of my best friends died right a week ago. And they were helpers, okay. And there's some law, but I admire the council, the town council over there in Cold Lake, they're putting money and working with the FCS already right now. And that's terrific. And the town of Bonneville, I'm going to see the mayor, maybe a week or so down the road. And I'm going to ask her to do the same thing. And they can, if they want to. It's their people. And you know how many people are exempt? The people from outside the MD come into town, there are no protection, no help for them alone, nothing. That's terrible. So, anyway, the fifteen minutes is just about gone.
I'm not sure, it's fifteen, sixteen, seven, doesn't matter. Any other questions for Mr. Chartran? Well, thank you, Mr. Chartran, for your presentation.
Let me know, I'm telling you that after June, there'll be a new government, and we'll be, we'll be prepared to help these guys. Because there's a lot of greenhorns coming in there. I know there's laws going to be out there, there's some people walking out already. So anyway, and you guys won't be here that long, you know. You're going to be in my boots pretty damn soon. And if you don't, I don't know how old you are, but me, I'm only eighty-six. That's, I've got two more projects on the way. I'm going to write you a letter on both of them, because I might need your help again. And if you need my advice on farming and helping, you'll make a hundred dollars more per cow. Who's raising cows here? You and who else?
Uh, no.
You, okay. I've got recipes for your own health and for you to make more money.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else to tell them? One more ask, please. Well, thank you, Mr. Chartran, for your time.
Well, no, me, it's free. I'm paying you guys to do that kind of stuff. And thank you again, because you're doing a good job. Okay?
Thank you, you have a great day.
And now, well, first, I'm glad to see you. Here, I'll shake your hand.
Sorry about that.
Well, there's some good, shake your hand.
All right, we'll take another five-minute break here, and then we'll get back.
This, I know, all of you.
Thank you.
Zero.
Welcome back, ladies and gentlemen. We just had Mr. Chartran give us a presentation. We're going to look for a motion after that presentation, gentlemen. Yeah, Counsel Cravieck? Okay, thank you. Moved by Counsel Cravieck on behalf of council, that council accepts the presentation by Mr. Chartran regarding the recent changes to policy number one zero zero five, seniors' transportation grant policy as information. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing that, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Okay, nine point two point one, I believe. Oh, one. We're good?
Sorry, you're waiting for me, and I'm waiting for you to speak. Sorry. Go ahead. Good morning.
Okay, good morning.
Apologize. I was looking at your papers.
So today, we're looking at bylaw number eighteen thirty-two, or the city of Cold Lake and the municipal district of Bonneville inter-municipal development plan, also known as the IDP, which is here for second and third reading. The adoption of this bylaw will repeal and replace the current IDP, or bylaw number fourteen oh five. The changes to the IDP are to reflect the updated requirements under the Municipal Government Act and to ensure that the IDP remains relevant for both the city and the MD with context for, to what is happening in the affected lands today. So first reading for the IDP was given on January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. The public hearing was held on February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. And based on the feedback from the public hearing, there are some proposed amendments to the IDP that I will present to you now. So on map three here, which is in front of you on the screen, it was revised to simplify the land uses. So you'll notice here that these land uses were changed over from industrial to agricultural. Additionally, some of the lands in this area here were, are no longer industrial either. There was also added reference to applicable ASPs. So you'll notice this blue dotted line here for Highway Fifty-Five. Additionally, down here, you'll have a blue dotted line here for another ASP in that area. And there was also an update to the landfill setback references. So rather than showing the exact, or what could be interpreted as the exact setbacks, it just provides arrows noting that there is a landfill setback and provides reference to another figure that goes into more detail, which I'll highlight in just a second here. So it makes reference to this figure here, figure five, which is on page sixteen of the IDP, which shows the working area highlighted in the teal and the disposal area highlighted in pink. Additionally, you can see here the three hundred meter setback highlighted in the pink dotted line and the four hundred and fifty meter setback highlighted in the four hundred, sorry, in the teal dotted line. Additionally, in the package that I presented to you here, you'll notice that two point eleven seven here has been removed. So based on discussion between the city and the MD, the reasoning for the removal is that the enforcement of the landfill setbacks is not enforced through the IDP. This is a provincial requirement. So this means that regardless of if there is a policy within the IDP stating that there's a four hundred and fifty meter setback from the landfill, or if there isn't a policy in there, we still are required to enforce that. The reason for the maps and the inclusion here is just to provide some context to both landowners and administration so that they're aware of all those restrictions within the IDP area.
Yes, go ahead, Deputy Reeve.
Yeah, just before you get too carried away, and I forget my question. So the green zone is a, so that'll be the second buffer then? So what can, what can or can't residents do with, from that green buffer inwards, I guess?
So from the green buffer inwards, based on wording under the subdivision and development regulations, which is part of the municipal government act. So it states that there is no subdivision and no development approval for residential purposes, schools, I believe restaurants, and possibly hospitals. Hospitals, I would have to double-check that one, but for sure, schools, restaurants, and, or, sorry, residences.
Okay, so somebody, just to be clear about it, I'm sure somebody's watching that has the questions. So if somebody bought a quarter of land or a forty-acre parcel, just for instance, say it's the one where your, where your arrow is now, so they couldn't build within the green zone in, no residential?
No residential.
They wanted to buy that forty acres and build an acreage on it, or a home, they could not?
That's correct.
As long as it's past that.
Yes. That's correct. Anything outside of this area is fair game for residential. Anything within is restricted.
Correct. So anything that's in there is grandfathered in already?
Yes.
Okay.
If you, as an example, sorry, I just lost.
There's even, there's a little bit of a subdivision that's in the, in the pink or purple within that as well.
Yeah.
So could they expand on their property as far as a garage or whatever else?
Yeah, garages, things along those lines are allowed. It only specifically applies to residence. So if they're looking to develop a second residence, that would be restricted.
Correct.
But in terms of accessory buildings, garages, anything that's not a residence in itself is allowed. So again, the same would be said for industrial, commercial purposes as well. There's a few other concerns that might come into play in terms of water wells within proximity. But you would be allowed to have commercial and industrial uses if, within, within that setback of...
Sounds good. And that's going across all landfills across the province, right?
That's correct. The only distinction is between operating and non-operating. So an operating landfill has the four hundred and fifty meter setback, whereas the non-operating landfill has the three hundred meter setback.
So if that place was ever shut down?
Yeah, it would shrink down.
Gotcha. Super. Okay, thanks very much for that.
And continuing on here, so in order to coordinate the adoption of the inter-municipal development plan between the city and the MD, the city will be holding their second and third reading later today, where the same recommendation will be made. And with that, I would be happy to answer any other questions at this point.
Yes, Deputy Reeve, do you have?
So, so talking to residents, and you kind of went down to, it's the map here where you filled out the yellow marks about the agriculture. Is there a reason why only those were recognized as agriculture? Because that one with the, with the three, three Lego blocks there, to the west side or to the left? Left, yeah, to the left. Why was that not, I guess, considered agriculture? Because it's the same type of land as there is on that one? And then also going south of Pinsky Lake, which is the lake all the way down, yeah, a little further down, one more down? Yeah, right. So bordering the blue line, those two properties are agricultural as well. They're all, they're all hay. So why wouldn't those be considered agriculture, but just those ones up, up to the top?
For sure. So specifically with regards to these three here, that was based off feedback from the public hearing, in which landowners had noted that the land was rather swampy and muskeg and difficult for development. And it was currently being used for agricultural purposes, and they wanted to see it remain that way in the future. And the city agreed. And so that's where the intention for changing that over from industrial purposes to agricultural came from. The original intent of the industrial was the continuation of industrial development and growth from the city. That's sort of the direction they were looking to go. But again, they agreed once the discussion with the public, with the landowners and the public kind of came about and agreed to change that over to agricultural. Why does it not extend further, I believe, was another question. Again, this kind of comes down to coordinating development with the city and their future intended growth as lands will eventually be annexed. That's many years down the line. But the intent is that these lands will be protected and potentially used for country residential and residential developments. And so that's just to align the development with the city. Moving down here, as to why these lands surrounding here are...
Yeah, one down.
One down?
Yeah, right there, that one, and then just to the one to the west as well, east as well, yeah.
And to this one.
Yeah, right in there, those two.
So these ones are being maintained as country residential. This one specifically is because there is an area structure plan in place at the time. It will be slightly impacted by the landfill setbacks. However, the southern half of it would still be outside of the, outside of the setbacks. And again, the intention here, I believe, is for the extension of the subdivisions and for country residential purposes.
So, so the end of the day is, the public has not expressed any interest in protecting that, you know, proper conservation was done, and everybody's happy as of right now?
Yes.
Okay, super. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
All right, just looking for a motion then.
I'll make a motion for second reading.
Thank you, Counsel Slipcheck, for making a motion on behalf of council. That bylaw number eighteen thirty-two, being a bylaw of the municipal district, excuse me, of Bonneville number eighty-seven, to adopt the inter-municipal development plan for municipal district of Bonneville number eighty-seven and city of Cold Lake be given second reading as amended. Any discussion on this motion?
Seeing that, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you. Looking for a third?
Thank you, Counsel Crick, for making a motion on behalf of council that bylaw number eighteen thirty-two be given third reading. Any discussion on this? eighteen thirty-two be given third reading. Any discussion on this? Seeing that, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you. Onto nine point two point two.
Good morning. So I have the municipal road approach policy, number three eight point zero zero seven. Administration is proposing changes to this policy for added clarification for the construction standards and to allow for the C.A.O. or designate to determine the recommended size of culvert and material used for the construction of road approaches. The current road approach construction standards attached to policy three eight point zero zero seven sets out the culvert size for road approach construction at a minimum of four hundred millimeters. At some locations may have ditch depth that require either a smaller or larger culvert. Administration is proposing to amend the standards to allow for the culvert size to be determined after a site inspection has been completed. Additionally, we're proposing to update the policy by adding the definition of chief administrative officer. The proposed amendments were presented to committee of the whole on February twenty first, twenty twenty-three, and administrations recommended that council adopts the amending policy as presented.
Thank you. Looking for a motion? Yes, Counselor?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Counselor Swiger, for making the motion on behalf of council. The council adopts amending policy number three eight double oh seven municipal road approach policy as presented. Any discussion on this? Seeing that, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you. Onto nine point two point three.
So administration is proposing changes to policy three eight point zero one eight licensing of road, licensing of roadways policy, following a request of council to propose processing, to propose processing time improvements to the roadway licensing application administrative process. The proposed amendments will improve roadway licensing application processing time by replacing the requirement of a public hearing with a public notification process pursuant to our bylaw number eighteen thirty, the public notification bylaw. Any concerns or correspondence received during this public notification will be presented to council at second reading for bylaw for consideration. The proposed amendments to this policy were presented to committee of the whole on February twenty first, twenty twenty-three. So administration is recommending that council adopts this policy licensing of road, roadways policy as presented.
Thank you. Looking for a motion? Yes. Thank you, Counselor Crick, for making a motion on behalf of council that council adopts amending policy number three eight zero one eight licensing of roadways policy as presented. Any discussion on this motion, gentlemen? Seeing that, I'll call for the That's carried. Onto nine point two point four.
So administration conducted an internal review of all lands titled to the M.D. of Bonneville and presented the results to council at a workshop on September twenty ninth, twenty twenty-two. From those discussions, three vacant undeveloped lots were identified on the south side of Mariel Lake, as shown on appendix A, for further consideration by council. We were able to determine that the lands were part of a subdivision registered in nineteen seventy-eight as plan seven eight two zero five one zero, and were part of a designated municipal reserve lot. The reserve designation was removed in nineteen eighty-three, and the lot was further subdivided into six parcels with birch and bare roads extended to access these new lots. Three of the parcels were sold and transferred to individuals, and the others remain, remain in the name of the M.D. of Bonneville. It was determined that the M.D. has no project, projected or current use for these parcels. Therefore, these lands may become available for public sale as per Part Three, Section Seventy of the Municipal Government Act and M.D. Policy two eight point zero zero nine. The estimated market value of the subject lands is thirty-six thousand seven hundred and, seven hundred and thirty for lot six, and thirty-eight thousand one hundred and fifty for lots four and eight. As per Section Four of the municipal lands policy, the lands can be sold by public auction if approved by council, with each parcel being subject to a reserve bid equal to eighty percent of the estimated market value. The committee of the whole reviewed this information on February twenty first, twenty twenty-three, and recommended that council make the lands available per, per sale. Therefore, the recommendation, excuse me, is that council directs administration to make available for sale with the following M.D. of Bonneville titled lands within the southeast of twenty-one, fifty-nine of five, as per policy two eight point zero zero nine.
Thank you. Just looking for a motion, gentlemen? Yes. Thank you, Counselor Kraviev, for making a motion on behalf of council. That council directs administration to make available for sale the following municipal district of Bonneville number eighty-seven titled lands within southeast twenty-one, fifty-nine, five, west of the fourth M, as per policy number two eight zero zero nine municipal lands policy, Plan Eight Three Two Fifteen Fourteen Block Fourteen Lot Four, Plan Eight Three Two Fifteen Fourteen Block Fifteen Lot Six, and Plan Eight Three Two Fifteen Fourteen Block Fifteen Lot Eight. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing that, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you. Onto nine point five, sorry, nine point two point five.
So during the same review as mentioned, with the Mariel Lake lands, administration also identified four vacant undeveloped lots in the Hamlet of Thirian, as shown on appendix A. We were able to determine that the four lots came under the ownership of the M.D. due to tax forfeiture pursuant to Section Four Two Four of the Municipal Government Act. It was determined the M.T. has no projected or current use for these parcels. Therefore, these lands may become available for sale. The estimated market value for the lots ranges from six thousand seven hundred and eighty to eleven thousand four eighty. And as per Section Four of the municipal lands policy, these lands can be sold at public auction if approved by council, with each parcel being subject to the reserve bid equal to eighty percent of the estimated market value. Two of the subject parcels certificate of titles are marked tax forfeiture, noted with an asterisk on the chart on the R.F.D. As it has been fifteen years following the date of the public auction and pursuant to Section Four Two Eight of the Municipal Government Act, the M.D. may register, may request to register to cancel the certificate of title for the parcels and issue a certificate of title in the name of the municipality. This would need to be completed prior to the sale of the lots. The committee of the whole reviewed this information on February twenty first, twenty twenty-three, and recommended that council make the lands available for sale as per our municipal lands policy. So admission, administration's recommendation is that council directs administration to make available for sale M.D. titled lands, Plan Six Zero Eight H.W., Block Two, Lot Twenty-eight, Block Two, Lot One, and as well as Plan Three Two Three R.S., Block Two, Lot Seventeen, all within the southeast of three, sixty-one of nine, and Plan Eight Five Three E.O., Block Three, Lot Two, within the northeast of thirty-four, sixty of nine.
Thank you. Looking for a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Counselor Slipcheck, for making a motion on behalf of council that council directs administration to make available for sale the following municipal district of Bonneville number eighty-seven titled lands within southeast three, sixty-one, nine, west of the fourth M, and northeast thirty-four, sixty-nine, west of the fourth M, as per policy number two eight zero zero nine municipal lands policy on Plan Six Oh Eight H.W., Block Two, Lot Eight, and Plan Six Oh Eight H.W., Block Two, Lot One, Plan Three Two Three R.S., Block Two, Lot Seventeen, and finally, Plan Eight Five Three E.O., Block Three, Lot Two. Any discussion on this motion? Yes, Counselor Swiger?
The, just the difference between selling at, at public auction and just selling it on the market, do, what if they don't sell at public auction? Do we have to go through this again?
Um, yes, I do believe so. The way the policy is written right now, it can only be sold by public auction.
Is that because of our policy, or is it?
Correct. It's just because of the policy.
So I mean, that, that would be the other lots, too. If they don't sell, we'll have to go through, so every year, or is it, we, if they don't sell at public auction, do we wait six months, or?
We are looking at making some changes to that policy as well.
Thank you.
Go ahead. To the Reeve and council, the municipal government act is clear, there is only two ways that an M.D. might sell property. One is through public auction, or the other is at market appraised value. So we could list the properties if the, although our policy currently doesn't allow, we could list the properties for sale with, with a motion of council and list them at, at whatever the market value is at that time.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, I seen that. I'll call for the vote. Or did we? Yeah. Yes, we didn't. That's carried. Onto nine point two point six.
Mr. Reeve, could I just maybe ask the C.A.O. to, for his recommendation on that last, do you, do you recommend that we look at that policy, though? Because I can see these lots, maybe we've got lots where we've tried to sell at public auction years ago, and they didn't sell, and we're still stuck with them. So if we listed them on the market, maybe at least we don't have to keep going back to these, and they may eventually sell? I'm not sure.
Uh, through the reef, to Council Swiger and the rest of council, we certainly could bring that policy back. There's, there's, I'm not sure why the policy restricted the sale in the first place. Most municipalities will either sell at appraised value or sell at, at an auction, whatever you can get at an auction. We certainly could bring it back. I, I anticipate we probably own this property for some time. I don't think this is going to be, I don't see people lined up at the door to buy these properties, so.
No. So I, I would suggest maybe I'll just ask if we want to bring that policy back and put both of those options in, so that we don't have to keep doing this every year? At least it's listed on the, on the market, I think, and we don't have to worry so much about.
Through the chair, I would suggest then, as a motion arising, to direct administration to bring back the, the municipal land sale policy, I believe that's what it's called?
Municipal lands policy.
The municipal lands policy, to a future meeting of council.
That's, that's a good idea. We'll finish this, and then you can make in the motion. Would you like to make that motion right now?
Well, if the girls are ready, if not, we'll do it.
I, I would suggest now, as a motion arising, because the next item's got nothing to.
Nothing to do with it.
Yeah. Okay, so let's make that motion now.
Thank you, ladies. Thank you, Counselor Swiger, for making a motion on behalf of council that council directs administration to bring back policy number two eight zero zero nine municipal lands policy to a future meeting of council as discussed. Yes, any discussion? Deputy Reeve, Fadav?
So the direction is like, we don't like the two options that are there now?
They're not there, though. There's only one option. They can only, they can only have a public auction.
He wants, add, add.
Yes.
You want to add?
Yeah. So they can sell it both ways. Because my concern is, we've probably, we may have listed these lands already at public auction, and they've never sold.
I don't think we have.
Well, I'm not sure, but.
Well, we went, we went through the list of stuff that, that, that was still under the M.D.
No, I, no, I guarantee we got a list of stuff, but we didn't, we didn't ask them, how, how many times in the past have we tried to sell this over the last forty years? Like, it may have been listed for public auction and never sold, so rather than bring it back every year, why don't we list it?
Counselor Kraviev, do you, do you know if it's ever been listed? So I think from my interpretation to what was presented, it was never, ever listed, and we were trying to, the motion was from council was to, I guess, expel some of our, our properties that we have. We went through it at workshop, and it was the stuff that was listed to us at that time. So just, just a question, but I, I don't think we have. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Reeve. It, it may have happened before my time, but during my time, I can't recall. Yeah.
Through, through the reef, I can confirm that when it came through as a tax forfeiture, we did try to sell it through public auction, and when that, no bids were received, at least within what we were asking for, the minimum bid, it was then reverted to the M.D.
Gotcha. Okay, thanks. So once, okay.
And Mr. Reeve, and for clarification, every piece of property that the M.D. takes on tax forfeiture will have been tried to sold once, that as part of the tax forfeiture auction. So every piece of property that we've taken on forfeiture would have been attempted to have been sold through auction once.
Any other discussion on this? Okay, I'm going to call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you. I believe we're nine two six, correct?
At the regular meeting of council on February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, a delegation presentation was made by the Bonneville and District Chamber of Commerce for financial support from the M.D. of Bonneville. The chamber also provided an update on their twenty twenty-two activities and this year's new and current programs. The M.D. currently allows for the Bonneville and District Chamber of Commerce and the Cold Lake Regional Chamber of Commerce to apply for fifteen thousand dollars in annual operating funding through the M.D.'s community association operating grant policy. The M.D. is also a member of both groups, paying membership fees ranging between seventeen fifty to two thousand fourteen dollars per year. Both organizations are also eligible to apply for event sponsorship funding up to five thousand dollars through either the municipal community action grant policy or the donations and sponsorship and recognition policy. As per the chamber's delegation presentation, they have requested that council approves, one, their community association operating grant for twenty twenty-three in the amount of fifteen thousand, a registration level sponsorship of the Bonneville and District Oil and Gas Show valued at twenty thousand in partnership with the town of Bonneville, where each municipality would contribute ten thousand dollars, a platinum level sponsorship for Level Up Lakeland, the region's first workforce development event in partnership with Community Futures Lakeland in the amount of seventy-five hundred, and a one-time sponsorship of ten thousand dollars for five years of recognition on a new sponsorship and member recognition wall project to be located at their new office location. Attached for council's review in appendix A is their delegation presentation. Costs and source of funding, obviously, this is quite a multi-pronged request. The total funding requested here equates to forty-two thousand five hundred, and you'll see in front of you the possible sources of funding depending on which, which option you are looking to potentially fund through a motion today. Administration's recommended action is that council directs administration to advise the Bonneville and District Chamber of Commerce to apply for funding support for their twenty twenty-three initiatives through the municipalities' currently available community grant programs and policies. I can also confirm that the chamber has submitted their application for their operating grant. However, there is some materials that, that we're needing clarity on, so it has not been processed as of yet.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Deputy Reeve, Fadav?
Yeah, in the spirit of giving to our, our chamber of commerce, I know last year we, we did the same number. Option, option one was presented last year and we, I know the city of, Coal Lakes, Regional Chamber of Coal Lake asked to, for us to sponsor the Feast on the Beach, which we denied the request, that we went with option number one. And they were only awarded the, the five thousand. And I think just in the spirit of keeping everything the same on both levels, we, we continue with that. Now you sending mixed messages to one organization saying yes and, and no to the other. So, and that being, stay, I'd like to make, make a motion for option number one, that council directs administration to advise Bonneville and District Chamber of Commerce to apply for the funding support from their various requests or municipal available community grants, programs, and policies.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Reeve for making a motion on behalf of council, that council directs administration to advise the Bonneville and District Chamber of Commerce to apply for funding support for their two thousand twenty-three initiatives through the municipalities' available community grants, programs, and policies. Any discussion on this motion? Yes, Counselor Skarsen.
Just a few items. So the operating grant, that was, so that's not budgeted every year and approved at a budget time?
Through the reef, each of the identified organizations that can apply for it in the policy have to go through the application process. And then it is reviewed based on the criteria within the policy. It is not always approved.
And then for number two, so we didn't approve, I mean, the oil show was canceled last year and we didn't have money budgeted for that that got carried over to this year?
Through the reef, that is correct. When I looked into their previous, their request last year, they actually never made the request. The, the executive director had scheduled a couple of delegations. Unfortunately, each one was canceled by her for whatever reason. I believe she had some issues on the family side. However, by the time she did present to council, the oil show had already been discontinued or canceled for that year.
Okay, and then for number three, I guess. The level up. So that is coming up in, I think, two weeks. So do they have time to apply for that or were they expecting it to be decided today?
The way, through the reef, through our current Community Action Grant Policy, that has three intakes a year. So the next intake deadline would be June fifteenth. However, the donation sponsorship and recognition policy is open at any time. However, if they do request through there, there is a maximum giving of two thousand dollars.
So the, the chamber comes and presents as a delegation to ask for funding. And then a month later, we bring it to council and say, go through the proper channels to get this funding? Like, could we have told them that when they brought their delegation here?
Through the reef, our usual practice, and I could let our manager of ledge services comment as well. Our usual practice for any delegation request that comes in requesting financial support, we do recommend they go through the regular policies first. And if they choose not to, then they come to delegation.
And the chamber chose not to, is what you're saying?
To council, when, when funding requests are made, we do typically offer the option to go directly through policies and we just simply advise that if they prefer to go directly to council, that's always an option. However, we make sure that they're aware that if council denies their request, then they are no longer eligible to apply through the policies. But we always leave it at their own discretion as long as they're aware of the situation.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, I'm, I don't want to say disappointed, but just a little bit, it's just kind of funny that, you know, we, they've been waiting and then we're just telling them now to go back. I'm not opposed to them doing the right, doing it through the right channels, but, you know, we, I think they wasted a month or whatever on funding for something that's happening in two weeks from now, right? So. And now, I guess, today, we could have just said, we approve fifteen thousand bucks for your operating grant. Is that right?
Through the reef, that is, it's definitely council's discretion whether or not to follow the policies that currently exist or to go ahead and approve it without following the policies variations are, are made. I will also add that unfortunately, because our meeting was canceled last week due to the RMA conference, this presentation would have been made at that time, potentially.
Yeah. Mr. Reeve, I would point out that the, under the council options, there are, there are three other options as opposed to just the administrative recommendation.
Yeah. But you already made it. Yeah? Are you finished, Doris?
I mean, I guess, I, again, I just, if, if we're just going to come back here and tell them to go through the action grants, I mean, it's just too bad we didn't tell them that when it, when they presented, right? I mean, we just waited a month of their time. I know at least for the level up, they were hoping to have an answer one way or another today, but they're probably a few weeks from that, I guess, I would, I would assume, right? Like, how long does it take for that process to work?
Through the reef, so with the sponsor, with the donations, recognition, and sponsorship policy, that normally takes, it could be anywhere from, from two days to a week. However, if council would like us to expedite that, we certainly could.
And so this, then that just leaves the decision in your hands then?
Through the reef, according to the policy, it is a decision of the CAO. I should also mention, I did go to the Oil and Gas Show website and I did note that the chamber has listed the MD of Bonneville as a sponsor currently.
Okay, Counselor Crick?
Yeah, I guess, thank you, Mr. Reeve. We have a policy and they chose to do a delegation, so I don't think it's, it's, the onus is on them if they didn't, if they wanted to not apply for the funding through the policy in the first place. And I, I support the motion that was made already directing them to apply through our policies for the funding.
Any other discussion? Yes, Counselor Swiger?
Of these four, was, you said there was at least one of them that they wouldn't get, like the, I think the number three, the seventy-five hundred for the Level Up Lakeland? If they applied, they wouldn't get, you said they'd get two thousand or something instead of seventy-five hundred? Was that it?
Through the reef, the next Community Action Grant intake would be June fifteenth. So they would not, they would not, it would not be looked at until the June fifteenth deadline. So the only other option at this time available for that specific event, since it is before the June fifteenth timeline, would be through the donations, recognition, and sponsorship policy, which is a maximum of two thousand dollars. However, the other option is, is, as the CAO pointed out, that you may choose to make, make it approval through council's motion today.
Counselor Skarsen?
Yeah, I, I mean, I just, I guess my two cents would be, I think the first two are pretty important, the next two probably aren't as important. I'm, I'm in favor of them and anyone going through the right channels for sure, right? And, you know, the month delay or whatever it ended up being is kind of not great, but, you know, hopefully they're operating and the Oil and Gas Show are two things that our administration find important and, and support, right? And three and four, I guess, whatever, I, I think they're not quite there, but, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Yes, go ahead, Mr. Hogan?
Thank you, just remember, as a council, I think it's, and I heard the word onus, and I think it's important to recognize that we have twenty-plus council meetings a year. And that the, these delegations can be scheduled. I do know that the chamber had earlier delegation scheduled that the, that the chamber themselves canceled. Leaving it to the last minute is not, is, it's, trying to expedite a procedure, and in our case, and I'll just remind council of our, of our own internal process, that we have to have RFDs into Legislative Services at the beginning of next week for the next council meeting. So it's not that it's a month delay, it's just that, that, that schedule for the April eleventh council meeting is already basically been created. And, and the fact that in this case, the chamber had delegations booked and had canceled the delegations months ago. So any, any group, whether it's the chamber or anybody else, can come and present to council at any time during the year and give much more time. So I, the, the time crunch on this is.
Not our, not our fault.
Yeah, the, the onus really sits on, on the, on any applicant to get their application. And we, we see this on a regular basis, that we get last-minute applications that were expected to, you know, to move mountains to get, to get approval through. When we knew for a year that there was going to be an oil show, so.
Thank you, Mr. Counselor.
Yeah, and I don't, I mean, don't get me wrong, I don't think that administration has done anything wrong here. I, I guess maybe my, what I'm saying is that we should have, like, this option should have just maybe been one of the options when they presented, right? To say, we're not bringing this back to council, you have to, you know, apply through the proper channels. And, I mean, why wait a month to tell them to do something what we could have told them to do at the time, right? It's not just for the chamber, it's for anyone, right? So if, if, if one to go through the right avenues and, and apply like everyone else, then tell them right off the bat, that's the way it has to be done, right? So that's all.
Okay, thank you.
You're right, though. I mean, they could have been here many times, this, this is for sure, so.
Any other discussion on this motion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. On to nine two point seven.
And Mr. Reeve, just as, as a follow-up, if we get an application for the small grant, the donations policy, we'll expedite that one. As soon as we get it, we'll look at it, we'll expedite that one.
Thank you.
Our next item is on the Bonneville Friendship Center Support Request. The Bonneville Friendship Center has submitted a letter to the MD of Bonneville requesting financial support to assist with their Community Kitchen Initiative. The Bonneville Friendship Center is a not-for-profit, community-based organization dedicated to bridging the gap between indigenous and non-indigenous people by promoting wellness, communication, and understanding among all people. They offer many programs and services, including a community kitchen that is available and open to all people Monday through Thursday, eleven thirty a.m. to twelve thirty p.m. During these times, it provides a hot, substantial meal to individuals in need as well as a welcoming space. With the rising cost of food, they are experiencing an increase of individuals and families accessing this program as well as their own rising food costs. It costs three thousand per year to operate this program and due to limits in funding, they offer this program for six months of the year. They are endeavoring to raise eighteen thousand dollars in additional financial support at this time so they can maintain the program for the full year. Therefore, they are requesting a donation of six thousand dollars from the MD or any other monetary contribution to the Community Kitchen Initiative. Attached for council's review is their request letter in Appendix A. Costs and source of funding. So the total cost or request is six thousand dollars. Possible sources of funding are dependent on the value. If council wishes to approve, if it's up to a two thousand dollar value, it would be earmarked through the donations and sponsorship recognition policy. If it's up to five thousand, it is through the Community Action Grant Policy, subject to the grant application meeting the associated policy requirements. And the third option is if council chooses to approve it today, any value would come out of council's grants to individuals and non-government organizations' budget. Administration's recommended action is that council directs administration to advise the Bonneville Friendship Center to apply for funding support for their Community Kitchen Initiative through the municipalities' available community grant programs and policies.
Thank you. Let's look, go ahead. Deputy Reeve?
Hi, just have a question in regards to what FCSS covers. This, this looks to me like a, an application for FCSS that we fund already for any kind of shortcomings that they might have. Is this the case of, you know, when, if we approve this, have they applied there? Are we, are we, are we like, are we double funding them? Should we take less money away from FCSS so we can give more to cases like this? I'm not sure. That's just a question I'm battling with.
Through the reef, I would, I do not know what program specifically the Bonneville FCSS provides to the community or if they've even approached them to fund this. However, maybe one of our counselors who sits on that board might be more aware than I on that.
Yeah, you'd like to, go ahead?
I don't think the FCSS funds this. I think Friendship Center and the FCSS are separate. And the FCSS, there is rules, provincial rules about how, where they can use the money. And I don't think buying meals is one of those things that they can do with it.
Yeah, I know when I sat on the FCSS that they, I don't think they were funded either, but they did fund like a volunteer appreciation dinner, let's say. But I think that was about the only thing in my four years that we did there, so.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other discussion or does someone like to make a motion? Yes, go ahead.
I, I guess I would like a little more information on this in wondering, I guess, just what the goals are. If it's, like, is it homeless people that they're feeding or, or is it students that don't have lunch to go to school? Or like, what are the, what are the demographics that we're targeting here with this program? Before we start giving money to it, I'd like to kind of have some more information on that.
Through the reef, I, unfortunately, I don't know the answer to that, but we can go back and ask them for further clarity on, on who, where perhaps the, the kitchen is and where the types of people that are. Are using the service.
It just seems a little bit odd to me that we have, if we're asking to fund it, there, there must be a reason why people are going there for those meals. So I recognize that, but I'm curious what the reasoning is and.
Go ahead, Counselor Skarsen.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's outlined, I think, pretty clearly in the letter here, who's going there and why they're using it, right? So talks about twenty-five hundred people a year there and one meal a day and kids for their lunches and all that stuff, so.
Yes, Counselor.
Yeah, I was, like, I read that letter, there's a lot of youths that they use this too. And I don't know, I, I got no qualms about helping feed the hungry. And I'm sure no taxpayers are, would be concerned about that either, about feeding the hungry.
Yes, Counselor.
So if they were directed to apply for funding through the proper channels as well, I guess, when do you decide who gets denied that funding? Like, what are the steps? Like, what would someone like this or even the chamber or anyone else, why would they not be approved, let's say?
Through the reef, they would not be approved if they did not meet the criteria that was identified in those two policies. So currently with the donations and sponsorship policy, I believe there's, off the top of my head, there are three main criteria. I can't remember what they are right now, but there are three items that, that we look for in the applications and the requests. The Community Action Grant is a little bit more substantial as there is a full application form and supporting documents are required. But their criteria there is, is just a bit more substantial.
And Mr. Reeve, the other criteria would be, is if the fund has been depleted. If there's no money in the fund because all the, if it's zero balance, yeah, then it would be declined and at that point come back to council.
Thank you, Mr. Counselor Skarsen.
Let's say, you know, let's say, I'm just kind of using a broad sense of it, right? Let's say where a, a association, an association like this applies, there's not enough funding to meet their requests. Would you then come back to council with it to ask if there's other ways to prove it or would it just be lost forever kind of thing?
Through the reef, if it was an issue of lack of budget, then. Uh, through the Reeve, if it was an issue of lack of budget, then it would be brought forward to council.
All right.
Um, I, through the Reeve, I should actually also mention that with the first deadline of March fifteenth now passed for the community action grant program, um, we do have, we did receive quite a few requests for funding, large size, uh, medium size, and event sponsorships. Uh, so, we currently have, I think we have approximately, it's actually in the R T, hold on a sec.
We're oversubscribed, yes?
We are massively oversubscribed, but, so by the time we bring to council the large, the large, um, the four large submissions, uh, for the community action grant large stream, um, we are, we will have depleted if they are all approved, um, we don't even have room to approve all of them, however, if they, if council chooses to, we will have depleted that fund.
So, is it, is it ti- like, who, who gets approved first? Is it time sent, like, whoever applies first? You know, you have, let's say, twenty small ones, and you can only approve, you only have to do, you know, a quarter of them. How are you determining who is that first, who gets approved first?
Uh, so, through the Reeve, uh, with the large stream, all of those presentations will be, it's actually council's decision on whether or not it is approved, so all four will come as delegations, and we will actually have, uh, when you leave today, we'll provide you all with a copy of each of the four applications for your review. And our hope is, um, that you'll have a chance to review all of the applications, and then when the delegations come forward on April eleventh, you'll be able to ask them their ques- any questions that you have, and any clarity that's required of their requests.
I, I guess I'm more wondering about the smaller donations, because it looks like a couple of these funds are just well depleted already, so is it, you know, are we, are we granting to the who comes first, kind of thing? Is that what the, the, you know what I mean? Like, you said you have quite a few, besides those top four, or those big four, so how are you determining who is, is the first come, first served, then? Is that...
Through the Reeve, uh, as far as the community operating grant goes, we do log when they come in, and those will be reviewed as, um, on a chronological order on the September fifteenth deadline. So, uh, they will be reviewed in chronological order. Uh, as far as donations, uh, sponsorship requests, policy, those are as well done in chronological order. Um, so, as they, those come in, they are reviewed, like I had said before, within two to five business days. Um, as far as the community action grant requests go, those, uh, standard is to wait until the deadline date and then review them, but they are also normally reviewed in chronological order as well. However, for the large stream, this is the first time that we've had applicants in this stream, and those definitely come to council, and there is no chronological review for those large ones. However, during those deliberations by council, we will have, uh, the discussion, we will need to have the discussion on what to do and how to review others that have been submitted by that deadline.
So then, when someone submits, and let's say your fund is depleted, you would respond to say, um, the fund's been depleted, but this is going to council now? Is that, or is it just, like, I, I guess I'm asking, are we going to, should we expect a bunch of small requests to come to council at some time in the, in the future here?
Uh, through the Reeve, what we would do is, we would let them know that, uh, should the donation sponsorship request policy budget not be depleted, we would direct them to that policy for, if they were requesting, if they were willing to ask for two thousand dollars or under, however, if they were looking for larger amounts, then those would, we would tell them they would have to come to council, or, uh, submit a letter directly to council. Currently in the community action grant policy balance, to date, we have a hundred and sixty-five thousand remaining of a hundred and seventy thousand. Pardon? How much is he asking for?
Uh, there's a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars remaining in the community action grant, then, uh, and I believe there's, uh, close to eight hundred thousand dollars in requests.
Uh, Mr. Reeve? Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to know how, how they are funded, though, and when, where does their funding come from, because they don't indicate that at all, other than they're nonprofit, so, it'd be kind of nice if they would send us a, I'm wondering, Esther, when they apply to one of these grants, do they have to show their budgets and where their revenue comes from, or no?
Through the Reeve, uh, through the donations and sponsorship recognition policy, they do not. However, through the community action grant policy, they do. And as well, through the community operating grant, they, they do as well.
Thank you.
Any other discussion, or is someone want to make a motion, or?
Well, I would make a motion for number one, did they apply like everyone else would?
Yes.
Just curious, I guess, uh, you know, maybe not to put you on the spot, but, do you, like, do you feel that this is the best way to do this? Like, is it working for you guys on, on your end, how people apply, and, you know what I mean? So, for example, you said you've got so many of them, you know, why is this one coming here today? Is it, instead of just you saying, this is the way it needs to be done? Like, how was all that determined?
Through the Reeve, so, uh, with any requests that are outside of policy, we do bring them to council, and this one was for six thousand dollars specifically. Um, however, they are open to other amounts, but because they requested six thousand, which is outside of the action grant amount, and the donations and sponsorship policy amount, that's when they directly come to council. As well, if it is a timely, um, like, I believe it was the last meeting we had one, which was extremely short timeline, uh, so then, that one as well was an emergent item at council.
Okay, um, thank you, uh, Counselor Scharson, for making a motion on behalf of council, that council directs administration to advise the Bonneville Friendship Center to apply for funding support for their community kitchen initiatives through the municipalities' available community grant programs and policies. Any other discussion on this motion?
Mr. Reeve?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. We could certainly, from an administrative perspective, either tighten up or loosen up the, uh, either way, the criteria, um, the issue becomes, uh, in, and if council had a policy that council would set an annual budget, and then would not exceed that budget, then we would just, at some point, just say no. But right now, we don't have any, uh, direction from council through, uh, through policy, or through even budget deliberation, as to whether or not that the number that council, the money that council set aside for community, uh, grants and, and, and donations is limited. Um, we have a number that we put in the budget, but that's not to say the council won't exceed that, and it certainly, you know, that, that's always a possibility. However, some municipalities will actually have a policy, that when, when the grant, uh, even the provincial government, we apply for a grant that's oversubscribed, when the money runs out, nobody gets the grant. Um, we don't have that, so as a result, um, we deal with these, uh, internally. Counselor Scharson asked a question, is it working for us? It's working for us, except that we know that if there's no money in the budget, we're going to have to do additional work to bring it back to council. So that's something I think long-term council, uh, should, should grapple with, as to whether or not, when we set a budget, is that the budget? And then we can certainly tighten up or loosen up the, uh, the criteria by which those grants are approved. Uh, but right now, uh, they'll all come back to council, because, uh, if, if they're oversubscribed, as the current, uh, um, community grants are, uh, we'd, uh, it, it would have to come back to council anyway.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Yes, Counselor, Crick?
Thank you. In, in regards to the C O's comments there, it seems a simple fix to me, we just admit, admit, adjust the policy so that, once the budget runs out, then they don't, there's no more funding, and anybody can, so that these requests don't have to come from administration to council, but I think anybody's free to make a delegation anytime they want to council. So, that, that would solve the problem right there, I think.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other discussion on this motion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. On to nine point two point eight.
Uh, this item is the Asset Management Implementation Strategy Review. As part of the first phase of realizing the direction of council in two thousand and twenty-one to create a municipal asset management program at the MD of Bonneville, administration has completed an asset management initiatives project that included the participation of all department management staff and a contracted, contracted consultant. This process involved, uh, staff survey to determine the level of asset management understanding and awareness of previous, of our, our previous asset management implementation strategy, an asset management training workshop for mid-level staff, an asset management implementation strategy workshop for managers to evaluate the previous strategy, which had been adopted by council in two thousand and eighteen, and determine any changes and updates. Administration is now presenting an updated asset management implementation strategy as a result of this project, for council's consideration and hopeful adoption. Just a reminder, municipal asset management is a coordinated process of the many aspects involved with the managing of a municipality's physical assets, as well as the operations relating to those assets in a cost-effective manner. It also improves administrative and operational accountability, as well as public transparency. This proposed two thousand and twenty-three asset management implementation strategy is a comprehensive guide to all departments and levels of the MD into a future of integrated asset management. Attached for council's review, in Appendix A, is the updated asset management implementation strategy being proposed, as well in Appendix B is our previous strategy from two thousand and eighteen. Reference to the strategic plan, this, uh, is supported through goal, goal one, building a viable and diversified regional economy, specifically the objective, which is to create a municipal financial sustainability plan, including the development of an active asset management program. Cost and source of funding, there is no impact to the two thousand and twenty-three municipal budget. The cost for the two thousand and twenty-two, uh, asset management initiatives project was thirty-one thousand, two hundred dollars, which was funded from last year's operating budget. Administration's recommended action is that council adopts the two thousand and twenty-three asset management implementation strategy for the MD of Bonneville as presented. I'm happy to answer any questions on the strategy.
Yes, Deputy Reeve Fadav.
Thanks for the detailed, uh, review, this is awesome. Uh, now, in regards to page number seven and, uh, number six, demonstrating accountability and transparency in decision-making, you also have, the thing it says, we're, uh, consider all stakeholders and multiple, and multiple tools, budget for implementation, for implementing the communication plan. So how, how do you see that working?
Through the Reeve, um, we've had, we're very lucky that this is a process that has been undertaken by quite a few municipalities, um, and we are able to do a lot of lessons learned, um, activities from that. For example, we currently, our asset management team, as well as our, uh, infrastructure, uh, manager and our parks and rec manager, have attended, uh, just a couple weeks ago, how do we, along with, uh, fifteen other municipalities, how do we develop and define levels of service for a specific area? So, we're constantly learning and sharing the information across multiple municipalities. This specific item, which is around communication and public engagement, um, as we all know, asset management is, is a very vague kind of concept, and nobody can really pinpoint in just those terms what it is. So there is a lot of plain English that is needed, uh, to explain the different components, and, because it is such a large thing. So, when it comes to the public, um, when we talk about defining our levels of service for roads or for campgrounds, that's us doing communications with our stakeholders. Additionally, we have internal stakeholders, so when our team, the asset management team, is going out and asking infrastructure, for example, to input into, into the database, we're doing communications with our own staff to educate them on what it is and what's the value in it, and the different ways they can use it to make their jobs easier and to save the municipality funds. Um, so, it's, I realize I'm rambling now, sorry, council. Um, at the end of the day, there's communications that externally and internally, and this specific item talks to how we do that, or that we've acknowledged that it's going to, something that we have to pay attention to and structure and formalize.
Beautiful. Yeah, no, thanks, I think it's important to definitely get the message out to our, you know, residents and our, like, the energy companies and, and everybody else, too, to the plans, and, and, yeah, I think it's, it's very, very nice. Kate, thank you.
Then you're one heck of a rammer.
Any other, yes, go ahead.
So where are we right now with asset management? Uh, because you'd mentioned, I don't know, months ago, that we had started looking at the buildings, our major buildings, or maybe all of them? Is that...
Through the Reeve, uh, so currently with, with the, uh, creation of our asset management team, and the facilitation and the training that we've started, um, just this past fall, we have completed, uh, the, uh, state of the infrastructure report for council in two areas, one council seen at the previous council meeting on bridges, um, which Todd was very good at presenting in a detailed manner. Um, we will have the buildings one, uh, available and presenting to council at the next council meeting, um, so that will be coming up as well. Within here, you'll see reference to next steps, developing state of the infrastructure reports in each service area, which will include asset replacement forecasting, so we are systematically tackling the different asset categories. Currently, we have the two completed, but we continue to move forward. Sorry, I should mention one more thing through the Reeve.
Sorry, go ahead.
Um, the other big piece to this, which ties back to our strategic plan, is our long-term financial plan, which I understand, um, our general manager of corporate services will be coming forward to council over the next, in the next, uh, month or two, which asset management is a component of that, um, not the other way around. So, the work on our long-term financial planning, um, ties back to asset management, um, but, um, that is going on concurrently at the same time.
Yes, Deputy Reeve.
Just one more co- comment and question, so it's, uh, uh, so messaging coming from, uh, the Alberta government is that we need to have some sort of asset management plan to be able to apply for future grant funding and, and STIP programs, or whatever it is. So this is, uh, totally key to that. Uh, have you heard, have they kind of committed to, to that same messaging to, uh, to your office as well?
Through the Reeve, I have not, uh, received anything formally, however, I do understand that, I can concur that I've heard the same discussions as well.
Kate, thank you.
Yes.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. No one's quite sure yet with the local government fiscal framework that's being created at the provincial level as the, as the replacement for, uh, MSI, uh, but it is our understanding that a large push in the LGFF, um, creation is going to be, that there will be very little money available for municipalities who have not planned for capital infrastructure replacement, and secondly, that the program is likely going to have some level of needs basis as well. So, have-not municipalities may end up being at the front of the line over have municipalities, and that will force have municipalities to even have spent a greater amount of time planning for those cap- those long-term capital infrastructure replacements. I don't know exactly what it'll look like, but I, I fully anticipate that there will be some, uh, level of both of those concepts, uh, built into the new LGFF framework, which is supposed to be rolled out later this year or early into two thousand and twenty-four. I, I think a little thing called, uh, May of twenty-three is probably in the way of that announcement, um, but I believe that's going to be, they're, they're going to form the backbone of the new, uh, uh, local government fiscal framework for municipal funding, will be that you have a, a robust asset management plan... will be that you have a, a robust asset management plan as to how you're going to replace capital infrastructure and secondly, that is going to be partly needs-based.
Thank you. Yes.
Mr. Reeve, I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
To accept the plan, that's very good.
All right, thank you, Counselor Carson.
You're welcome.
Sorry.
Whatever, we all look alike, Mister Reeve.
I just heard a thank you in it, everyone's, they're very thankful. Thank you, Counselor Swagert, for making a motion on behalf of council that council adopts the two thousand and twenty-three Asset Management Implementation Strategy for the M. D. of Bonneville as presented. Any discussion on this motion? All right, I'll call for the vote. Sorry about that. Darcy?
Very insulting.
All right, that's Kerry. I think we need a couple-minute break here.